But you know what? They want to move dirt on the other end and then they can't find where to put it. The water? It's a personal problem. They need to call the priests, rabbi, or minister.
Another commissioner?
Yeah. Well, they seem to get a lot of response from the commissioner.
Yeah.
Just saying it's got to get there, doesn't it? It's gonna get there.
I'm sure this is true. I don't know what's about it. Ken, as I always told his people, you can't do anything that I have said enough and he's going.
We'll tiptoe through that. Big bid opening.
One?
It's a 4H rental. Steve only gotten one for the last one.
No, it was more exciting where I thought, well, I'll just wait for it. I'll put my step in there.
Congratulations, that'll make it up time, by the way.
Oh, we did. We did good.
I have four minutes.
What? What? You rushed us and rushed us and rushed us.
I think we did pretty good, didn't we?
It's more of a getting a hard time.
Thank you.
Much fun.
Yeah.
I enjoy you giving me a hard time this week.
I'm good at it.
It's my pleasure.
He looked so happy when he said it, too.
I know. Sincerely. I like him.
Well, we determined already that she and my wife are exactly alike and
Well, they just
I was with my wife all last week. That was enough.
That's how it normally works.
You only have so much joy in one lifetime, right?
Yeah, that's right. I only have so much joy in one lifetime.
Steve, we got this additional bid. You want to do something yet to start for the 4H? And we're just going to refer to the 4H. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Ken, we're close enough. Let's come
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Approve the amendments of 51922.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approve the amendments of 52322.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approve the amendments of 52322.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Opening bids, 4H Storage Building Rental. Mr. Howard.
It's my understanding that, yeah, I'm not getting there. I understand that there were no bids submitted last meeting and there was a request that the 4H contact bidders would ask the board for a motion to amend the rules to allow the bids to be received three weeks later.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, but 4H contact all the same bidders again?
Right.
We're sure.
The notice went out by publication.
And she emailed each, there was a list on that memo of everybody that she emailed.
Okay, because
Yeah.
It just looked there was another email that indicated she was encouraging one person to do that. That's why I had a concern.
There's probably 20 on here.
I don't know. I didn't get communication.
I know. I saw that, but I thought that was the original. If it's the second go around, then I'm perfectly fine.
It is.
Okay.
So do we have a
They, we have a bid from Lakeview Marina. Do we both agree the rules? I'm sorry.
Well, let's Did we have a motion, Ken?
Yes, motion is second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Mike.
First bid is from Lakeview Marina. This is to use the, to use the 4H rental bid from October 1st to May 1st. October 1st of '22 to May 1st of '23. The bid is $2,100. They also provide a certified check in lieu of bid bond. Any persons or entities that know the other bids that should have been submitted by now, if not, move that to bid be referred to the 4H department for review and recommendation two weeks from today.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Plaid approval, Dave Lucas, Pace Farms.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have three plats on the agenda. Pace Farms, Coverdown Riverwood Estates, and Potter's Bridge Estates. And I'm glad to answer any questions. I won't go through all three of them unless you would like me to. We recommend approval of all three.
Motion to approve all three.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Oh, I guess if you want me to sign with that official.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Now is the most exciting part of your meeting.
Who are we?
We have the most exciting presenter.
That's right. It's Mr. Energy. I have no road cut or private traffic control permits today, no bonds for acceptance or release, which brings me to agreements and/or supplements. I have supplemental agreement number one between CHA Consulting and Hamilton County. This is for the 236th Street Central project. This is a net increase of $265,100, bringing the new not-to-exceed amount to $1,358,900. The majority of this is for appraisals and review appraisals and additional, some additional design fees. Would recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next two items I have for you are right-of-way assurance letters. The first is for DES number 1901694. This is bridge number 187, 106th Street over Mud Creek. This is basically just telling indot we're going to follow all of the rules in getting right-of-way. Would recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next is for DES number 1801421, 146th Street, Allisonville Road interchange. Once again, we're just saying we're going to follow all the rules. And we have done this one before, but the personnel changes, so we have to update the letter.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item I have for you is a condemnation request for on DES number 1801421, 146th Street over Allisonville Road for parcels four and six. At this point, we're still in negotiation, but their 30 days has elapsed and this is authorized and has to go forward.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item I have is acceptance of streets in Heron Hills, Section 1, containing .11 miles of road. We recommend the board approve or accept.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have no traffic study correspondence for you today. I do have the results of public works quotation dated 6/13/2022 containing one. This is the guardrail repairs for Bridge 54. Recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item I have is official actions for Heron Hills, Section 1. This is for various speed and stop conditions. Recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next, I have requests for road closures. I have two separate requests. The first is for small structure 21039. This is Anthony Road between State Road 38 and 216th Street. This will be a five-day closure. The contractor had a window of opportunity for next week, so between June 20th and June 25th to complete this work, would recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the last one is for the road closure of 276th Street between Dunbar and US 31. I was out there earlier today and noticed they had put up signs that it would be closed on or after today. It is not closed today, but it will be closed, should be reopened by November 30th once it does close. They have the bridge to replace and multiple small structures along the way. The only thing on there that has to have access is Reynolds Farm Equipment and indot has planned the maintenance of traffic so that they will have constant access. Would recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Well, do we know when they're going to close it?
We just had the pre-con last week. They're moving as fast as they can, so the only sign that's up so far is the
I know, but that's so annoying because people start changing their plans now when you put them up to you.
Yeah. They, this portion is like the first phase that they have to do.
Okay.
So it's early work and so they need to get on it. Those are all the items I have for you. But do you have anything else?
No. I don't have any.
Anthony Road, I think there is one business on their kids, like in that area. You might check for businesses to let them know.
Okay.
I thought you said you, it's going to be exciting and most important.
Just wait till you see the rest of your agenda.
This will be the highlight?
Thanks.
Connor's still got to go late.
Emergency Management Agency, Shane Booker.
A way ahead of time. Oh, he needed variance on, was it just the overtime issue or
And meal expense.
And we'll add the meal expenses on there.
Oh, the meal, I moved to approve the meal expense.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I think he also asked for extension on PTO time.
Yeah.
That was
Yeah, he did. He did. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
There was also a grant.
That was the Industrial Safety and Training Services contract?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Is what that was?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So Steve, that was for you and the sister.
Well, who is here? We're ahead of schedule.
I was going to say, I don't see Jill.
I think Hand is here, or it's not Hand. Yeah, hand funding agreement. Community Development Block Grant.
Is Jill Ackland here?
But I see in the crowd that we have Mary Shaw.
ISSD? There he is.
Joanne's here. If there's any questions about that, that's for the QAQC work on the orthophautography for 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next one is a VMware subscription. About five years ago, or maybe more at this point, we moved away from VMware and went to Microsoft for virtualization on our servers because there was no additional cost. Microsoft is changing their model and so we looked at the numbers and it's actually more affordable for us to go back to VMware than to continue with Microsoft on the virtualization.
Is it required downloads of the software on personal devices or anything?
No, this is strictly servers and backend.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then this agreement really is a cleanup of an agreement that Jeff Schimmer had in Communications. It's for the maintenance of the fiber ring. Zach has done a ton of work with Zayo to identify the locations, the exact locations, and build a map, which Joanne is working on in Travis. But because we cleaned all that up, they've cleaned up their locations and their information around the equipment in each of those locations. And that is really just a contract. There's no, there's no change in cost, no change in terms, other than clarifications of location.
I think it's important on that map that, I'm not sure the wording, that we declare this confidential, not open to public records as we create that, because I don't
It will be internal only. It's my
But it's still a public record unless we protect it.
If it's maintained by us, then it falls into a public record and I think we need to take an overt step and we'll give you the, we'll put together the language, send us a description of what you call whatever this group of data is, and we'll declare it confidential for security purposes. So you can do that on the backend if there's a request, but it's a lot easier to do it on the frontend and be very protective.
Okay. And I did, I also talked to Ryan Horan about that, the Zayo update, and just made him aware of the, there's no change in terms to that. It's just clarifications.
Good. I move to approve it.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And are we going to do that resolution on public records today?
No, we'll do it, we'll do it in two weeks.
So don't finish the map until
I don't know if he heard you.
Joanne did.
Okay.
Yeah, don't, don't turn it on until two weeks from today.
We're still going through some stuff.
And give us a
I'm sure
explanation that you understand. We don't have to understand it. If you understand it, it includes the scope of all the data.
Okay.
Okay?
Jill? Court Administration, Jill Ackland.
Good afternoon, Jill.
Hi. So we've got a couple of things in front of you today. The first thing that we have is for Veterans Court. We currently have one attorney who serves as the public defender representative in Veterans Court. Veterans Court, it's good news. It's growing. We're getting more participants in there. So we are looking for a part-time public defender to serve in there for when the full-time public defender's out and also handle the increased caseload. The second thing we have is from Judge Campbell, Superior Four. He has two public defender contracts to finish out 2022. One of them came as a result of a public defender leaving and another one came as a result of the public defender originally signed a six-month contract for 2022 and has decided to go ahead and finish out the rest of the year. So that's what we have.
Make a motion to approve the 2022 Veterans Court Defense Attorney contract as well as the Hamilton County Court Superior, or Four Adult Pauper Attorney Contracts.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hamilton County Leece Library, Kim Logan. Ms. Logan, you have three minutes. Okay.
So I'm going to read mine tonight, or today, because I feel like I have a lot to say here. I am a 34-year resident here in Hamilton County. My husband and I lived here in 1988. We have two daughters, raised them here, and they are both married and have their families here with children. When our children were in school, we frequented the H E L P, sorry, H L E P L, and I was never concerned that I would find material that was not age-appropriate in that library. I felt comfortable leaving them when they were older to join other students for study groups or do research without me. I want to first make sure you understand that my concerns do not include banning books, burning books, censorship, or anything like that. I wanted that to be very clear because I've been accused of that repeatedly. That is not where this is going. I'm looking for a solution to access, to the access of inappropriate material to young children, such as how a 10-year-old can go, cannot go to an R-rated movie without parental consent if they go to the theater. However, if they go to the library, our public library in Noblesville or Ann Fisher's, they can check out an R-rated movie without parental consent and they can check it out without a parent even knowing. About a year ago, I was introduced to the fact that there's materials housed in the teen section that is completely inappropriate for teens and pre-teens who visit that teen section. I've read several books and spoke with the library board requesting that these books be moved out of the teen section due to the content. They include such things as drug use, rape, masturbation, profanity, and other highly sexualized topics that are appropriate for discussion at home, not in this library. And at a minimum, it should be with parental consent if they were going to be checking out these books. Additionally, I was made aware of the Rainbow Club at the library, ages 11 to 18. This is an LGBTQIA+ focused, fine, no problem, but this club offers a select book for free to the students. They sign up, no parental consent, and the most recent book, which is called Flamer, which I brought today here, this book is distributed to the students and then they need to discuss it. I read this book. I was disgusted. This book is listed as a young adult area, but it's in the teen section, also accessible to younger children. We, I requested that the board consider having books such as the Rainbow Club or any other club that would have sexualized material that they would consider parental consent. I think that is more than a good negotiating factor, a good compromise, if you will. No one would second that motion. So we had one board member that she would not. So that's very concerning because the gentleman Craig Seedy, who is currently on the, one of your appointees, and I know the other one, their term expired, but Craig sat there, he would not, so he basically didn't want to go on record saying, "I approve of having pornography accessible to young children." This is really sad to me. This does not represent Hamilton County values in any way, shape, or form. This is sexualizing children, making the material without parental consent accessible to these children. That is inappropriate. I read online into Indiana Code title 36 Government 3612 to 20. This says a library board member may be removed at any time by the appointing authority after public hearing for any cause. One is that jeopardizes the public confidence in this member. I can honestly say Bill, both Bill Crandall, who I know is leaving, and I hope he will appoint someone that will uphold Hamilton County values and family values. But Chris, sorry, Craig Seedy, who's the other, your other appointee, I think he should be removed. He continues to vote with, with the librarian who is wanting this type of material accessible to young children. I have no problem with it being in the library. I have no problem at all. What I do not like is that it's accessible to young children. I have informed my daughter and anybody else that will listen to me, if you're taking your young children to the library, you need to be with them at all times because they could see things that you don't want them to see. I want parental involvement and that's what they're leaving it up to, but that's not happening. So if you have a chance to look at the, this book, Flamer, I mean, it's laced with profanity and it is, it is really sick. It really is. A book that is, if a parent goes and checks this out and they say, "Hey, I want to talk about this with my child," no problem. But for this to be something that the library board is promoting is really inappropriate for young children. So I would respectfully ask that as you consider an appointee to replace Bill Crandall, that you will get somebody that is going to uphold the Hamilton County values. And secondly, I would also respectfully request that you consider either speaking with Mr. Seedy or replacing him. You have, the law is here. You can do it, you know? And there are probably other people that say, "Oh, it's okay." But I would say if you took a poll in Hamilton County, the vast majority of people would say this is not appropriate for small children. So thank you very much for
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay, Community Development Block Grant, Mary Shaw.
So before you is a funding amendment to agreement for Hand Inc. for their Cumberland Cottages project. Some of the changes in the funding amendment include an increase of the total project cost to $700,000, which increased by $500,000 that they were awarded through our Affordable Housing RFP. And then other changes include adding the public infrastructure improvements serving the site and soft costs for that $500,000, $500,000, which they, that's what they're going to use the $500,000 for. And also it is actually coming under a different CDVG funding account. It's coming under the 2019 CDVG funding account as opposed to the $200,000 that they originally funded came from the 2020 funding account. So I would request for this funding amendment to be approved.
And so you're substituting the funding because of a calendar issue with using funding available?
Correct. Since the funds that were used for this Affordable Housing RFP was through the Seedy funds and that was the 2019 funds.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Committee reports.
Go ahead. I'll let you go first.
The main report I have is with respect to the 911 Executive Committee meeting. As I reported, we will be looking at the budget in our next August meeting. Staff's working on that currently. I've suggested we do a review of that whole dispatch center salary and wages to make sure we're, remain competitive given the nature of that. We will also be discussing a proposal on a different method of distributing the funding with respect to what we're doing now with laptops, radios, that type of thing. It's been suggested we go on like a post-war officer basis. However, as we discussed in the meeting, the large jurisdictions that obviously would be fine for them, but we have to be careful of what we've centralized at 911 with respect to staff so we make sure we continue to properly support the smaller units to the north. So we'll have, have folks look at that. Chris Lutz will be looking at that specifically because he represents the smaller jurisdictions.
I just wanted to take this time to congratulate our Public Relations and Media Director Tammy Singer and her daughter for being recognized as Best of Show for its TikTok for Teens Vaccine Project, for the Hamilton County Health Department at the PRSA, Hoosier Pinnacle Awards. So congratulations to you.
Good job.
Anything else? We've discussed previously, but in our insurance meeting, there was an issue concerning us changing our prescription drug card vendor. We have set up a meeting. Robin has advertised it.
It will be.
It will be. And we're inviting the two of you to come and hear what they have to say about it, okay?
Okay, great.
It's not been established yet, correct? Or do we have a date?
Yeah, we do have a date, don't we, Robin?
I'll have to get with Sheena on that because I'm not sure what was, what was finalized. But I will check with her.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Attorney? Mr. Attorney.
I have nothing directly for this stage of the meeting. Connor, do you have some?
Yeah, two things. One, the Baker's Corner project a couple of months ago was broken down into four sections. It was 1A and B, which was the immediate Baker's Corner area, sewer and water, and then Phase 2A and B, which is sewer and water in the up to 276th Street area. At that meeting a couple of months ago, you guys approved 1A, which was just the sewer in the immediate Baker's Corner area, and did not approve 1B for the water. We, through Commissioner Harbrandt and Marty and his team, we've gone through and have received $10 million of state ARPA funds through the IFA to be used for the Phase 1 part of the project for $5 million for sewer and $5 million for water. And we have that agreement here today before you. So before that, we need to have the approval of Phase 1B so that we can start down the road for the water in the immediate Baker's Corner area. So if you have a bigger motion on that, then we can do the IFA grant after that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
And then this part is, so this is, it's ARPA funds. The only restrictions are it has to be used for the actual construction of the water and sewer in the immediate Baker's Corner area. And we will receive those pretty, Marty Preppin from Long, pretty quickly after we get the signed copy to Jim McGough over at ISA. And they will set up a process where we submit their invoices to them, or they can just give us the money in the front, and then we handle our report back, but we can deal with that with all of the really at the same time. So I have the grant agreement between the county and IFA for you guys' approval signing today.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
And then the last thing is through this, through the tech memo that Westler Engineering has been conducting for this study and for this project, they have come to a conclusion on the recommendation for who the county should enter into a wholesale water purchase agreement. Their recommendation based on fees associated, costs associated, timeline, and potential project operations with connecting to them, it makes most sense to go with Indiana American Water. So what we're asking today is for the authority to start into negotiating the wholesale water purchase agreement with Indiana American Water. There's no agreement ready, but we'd just like your permission to start that process today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
And that is all for me.
I just see your signature on it.
Yeah, just, yeah, sorry, it's just the board president.
Just wanted to make a comment, and I wanted to thank Connor Sullivan as well as Marty Westler for, I don't think people really realize the time that's been involved in this Baker's Corner project. This is going to be something that's going to be transformational for our county. But I think to date, I mean, we have at least two to three meetings a week. A week. Some of those meetings are two hours. There's been a tremendous amount of time that's been, you know, put on this to make sure that we do this thing right. So just a big thanks to you guys for all the time that you guys have put into this because I think that it'll be time well spent, so.
Thank you. Director of Administration.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a long list on your agenda, but they're fairly simple items. First item concerning the request to the council to adjust the mileage reimbursement. I believe the auditor has sent you an update on that, why the council tabled it, and the action that the federal government's planning on taking. And I believe the council responded to that at the July meeting.
They were. So they did after the fact. When you guys tried to do what you did, I sent you the email Friday night that they have agreed to up that to 62 and a half cents.
So that's an increase of only four cents?
No, it was 10 because we were at 52 and a half.
Oh, you were 10.
And so they added the dime, and it's on the webpage and official.
Okay, great.
And I sent that to you and the seven, so they'll go ahead and confirm that.
Perfect.
Good, thank you.
Next item on the list, submitting to the board on behalf of Lisa Haney, they propose security contract from their current vendor, Eagle Trident. As in most cases, the price has grown up. They wish to raise their hourly rate from $25.50 to $35. This contract is paid from the 4-H budget, and I've included the email from Lisa and a copy of the proposed contract.
Is this on the specific events where they come out for security?
Correct.
And that's a direct pass-through, is it not?
I'm not sure.
Under the rental?
I know. I think it is on most, and I don't know if it is on all.
Okay. I move to approve. I don't think we have any alternatives.
I agree. I'll second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next item on the list is a letter from Ralph Watson, Community Corrections Director, advising of the retirement resignation of Bob Bragg from his board. Bob was a commissioner's appointment representing juvenile probation. Director of probation, Madonna Wagner, does have a recommendation if the board wishes to fill that spot today. She recommends Kim Christman to replace Bob. Kim has worked for probation for several years in the juvenile area.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
And I'd just like to acknowledge Bob. He has been instrumental in helping with the JDAP program, that's the Juvenile Alternative to Detention. And they have made significant progress with the various jurisdictions on doing better assessment tools so we're not doing permanent damage, quite honestly, to children that make bad choices by taking them to detention unless it truly is warranted. So I'd like to congratulate him on that and wish him a happy retirement.
Dino. Yep.
Next item on your list, submitting to the board for review and approval, a support letter for the Potter's Bridge Park expansion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next item on the list, submitting the annual request from Susan Peterson for the allowance to deviate from the county policy on accrued time. This is the annual request to accommodate staff work hours during the 4-H fair.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next item on the list, Noblesville Main Street Downtown Business Summit is planned for August the 19th from 7:30 a.m. to 9 a.m. They would invite a commissioner to speak if one is available.
What's the date of that again?
August 19th.
It'd be available if nobody else can do it.
I'm available too.
What do we want us to speak on?
The progress Hamilton County has made to benefit downtown Noblesville.
Well, that one's fairly easy.
Yeah, that's very easy.
Pretty obvious, too, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy on that one. We've got progress done. So just offer up the two and see what they want.
Okay. Mr. Delinger, volunteer.
Yeah, just take the easy ones, will you?
Yeah.
I got one the 29th, it's not so easy. Take it over.
Sure.
Under the next part of the agenda.
I'd be happy to.
Work session items, obviously you've got a work session with Mindy following the regular meeting. I believe representatives from Reynolds Construction are here, would like to say hi, take about 10 minutes to speak with you. You have a thank you note from Elijah Kincaid, who was one of our award recipients of the Youth Service Award recently.
Great.
You also have a letter from Endot regarding plans for multi-purpose trail construction and bridge rehabilitation in the city of Noblesville. Would be on Little Chicago Road from Elderberry to Carrigan. At the conclusion of this meeting, Commissioner Harbrandt would like to discuss the One Zone event scheduled for August 17th. Before you get to that, I've got three other items here to chat with you about. You have a letter attached to your agenda from Svetlana Reimer, Vice President of Development External Affairs for the International Center, wants the commissioners, and I'm assuming you would have to involve the four mayors, to present Hamilton County as a sister city for a city of Ukraine. It's information only, and you can discuss it with the other executives.
Okay.
Director Wood would like to present his information he has generated regarding the Sherwood property and getting that facility taken down.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I want to go to council with your approval to request $60,000. That also includes money for environmental, just Mr. Johnson, just in case any other environmental issues pop up during that time period, we can take care of it.
So take care of the tires, too, Steve?
Take care of all tire removal, debris.
This is a women's shoulder property.
Yes, yes. You'll notice we went ahead and mowed everything out there and got it down for, get a better look to what was out there. So all the items will be removed from the property. The two, actually the street buildings out there that will be demolished and filled in, tires removed, all debris removed. Four big trees, the center around the homes are going to be removed to give you a bigger open area to work out of, make it safer to tear down those buildings. And we'll widen that entryway coming up in there to allow for whenever you decide your construction, the entryways will be widened for you to go.
Good, great.
I would encourage anybody that's had the opportunity to go out there to that site. It's absolutely beautiful sight. Really is.
Steve, as far as widening that, I think Highway was working with ANF to get a road cut. You might want to check the spec and the exact location of that.
All right. That's it.
Byron has been out there taking areas of that, right?
I don't know if he's been out there lately since we've mowed it. So I'll check with him.
Yeah, if you are having, because we'll be showing it in the state of the county, and I'd like to have the most up-to-date thing we have.
Will do. Take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you need to make a motion to allow him to go to the council?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
The last item before Commissioner Harbrandt has this topic, Ryan Horine is here to present the request regarding the 911 center.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
So before you have a request, basically, we want to utilize the GSA Schedule or Price List, which is the federal procurement list, to do laptop purchase for our partner agencies. So our IT staff has worked with them and developed a spec that meets all their needs and desires, and we're just asking, this will be the first time we've utilized the GSA Schedule to make this type of a purchase. It's allowed by state code, and we just wanted to ask for your permission before we proceed down this path.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most curious, your name is?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. That concludes my list. You had that one topic.
I'll talk to him.
Back there, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Just wanted to bring one thing to your attention. Our deputies are encountering juveniles and teenagers in the parking garage on a pretty regular basis, sitting on the top ledge with their.
I just reported it last week. I was up there and I saw it.
Yeah, we've been holding roll calls at the top of the building and in there throughout the night, and like pretty much every night, we're encountering someone. So our recommendation is that you consider an ordinance and some signage for the building. Amy is already working on trying to find some language, but my recommendation is that she.
What kind of an ordinance? I mean, what would we say?
Talking about things like skateboarding, loitering, use of fireworks, use of alcohol, and that type of thing on county property.
Bicycle racing.
I know that they are working on some signage over there. I had drove through there just last week. It was probably about 7 o'clock, and I saw four individual kids up there setting and overhanging at the very top. So I brought it to the attention of Director Woods and Steve, or Dan Stevens, so that we could get that addressed.
Could we close the upper level with something at night? I mean, is it full during the evening? Temporarily till we figure this out?
It's not full with vehicles, if that's what you're asking.
Well, just could we put some signage across with some, that goes to the upper level saying, "This area is closed after such and such a time."
Yeah, I think for, and our deputies are asking people to leave or move on, but in order for them to actually enforce something, then I think an ordinance needs to be behind that.
Right. I'm just trying to say temporarily.
I don't think signage would do, mean anything.
Well, we could suspend the rules and close the upper level immediately.
And we.
But I don't know that we should close the upper level.
I think that we need to have a little bit more discussion on it.
I do, too.
Well, I'm afraid some kid who thinks he's invincible will end up a spot on the ground.
Well, we, I mean, and what they don't realize is they're all on camera. We have them all on camera, every one of them.
Well, might also suggest that at your next meeting, we consider an ordinance concerning lighting off fireworks, because a lot of people are looking forward to sitting up there to watch the Noblesville Fourth of July, and we don't.
We've already talked about it.
We've talked about it.
We probably don't want any alcohol.
Yeah, we've already talked about it.
We currently have an ordinance, too, for skateboarding on county property as well, and it's that as well.
Yeah, that was because of what we had out here several years ago.
We'll work on that ordinance and get it to you at your next meeting.
Well, I'd like to catch.
Sheriff, I want to congratulate your organization for catching up with the kids that defaced Potter's Bridge so quickly and arresting them. And hopefully, we're going down the same path on who defaced the parking garage.
That is definitely our goal, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job.
That's all I've got. Thank you, guys.
So you don't want to take any action today on that?
No.
Okay.
Adam Omer.
Just a few things. First, I have the Hamilton County Express Endot pay request for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next, I have the coverage of bridge certification that we do every year for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
I'm not sure they're saying the right spot, do they?
We'll have to check.
Probably not, I guess I just saw where it says.
Yeah, that's the right spot.
It is? Okay.
There's been a motion and a second, Steve.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next, I have the Treasurers Monthly Report for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
That would be nay.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next, I have a liability trust monthly expenditure report for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
Next, I have payroll claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
And lastly, I have dinner claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most curious.
We'll have.
Thank you. Is there any other business that's come before the commissioners? Hearing none, we will take a recess. We do have a work session in the back after this meeting. If you'd like to attend, you're welcome, it's open. And so we'll take a recess for right now.
How long's that recess?
I'll call you.
Recession.
I don't know how long it's been. Are people, do we need to come to there?
I think that they're the people for the.
What's that? Three innings of kickball.
You want?
Mindy's here for the domestic fun.
Well, let's talk about it.